And it locks tonight.
Yes, it will. You guys are finishing it off, aren't you?
I just always use that one. I know it's a student thing.
It's always, I mean.
The extreme ends, I think, are always really difficult, but then.
Really, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need some steam arrangement. We almost sat here for four minutes. Why two and three? Okay.
Can we all say?
Yeah.
I'd like to call the Monday, January 16th, 2025 Smithfield School Committee meeting to order before it begins, please, and the collection of flag.
Aye, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emergency evacuation and health notification. In case of an emergency, there are two main exits out of the media center. They are located to the right and left side of the media center through the set of double doors. Proceed to follow the exit signs to the exit doorways. There are restrooms located outside of the media center through either side of the double doors. There's a public comment signup sheet up here at the desk. That's for later on in the meeting during the public forum portion of it. Please sign up. If you speak either during the meeting or at that portion, please speak at the podium so that it's picked up by the audio portion for our recording here. First item, consent agenda items, which are items 4.1, approval of the minutes of the January 2nd, 2025 School Committee meeting. 4.2, approval of bills, regular bills totaling $430,587.13, direct checks from December 28th, 2024 through January 10th, 2025 totaling $103,894.13, lunch bills totaling $1,080, and a homeschooling list that's attached. This will require a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda items.
And a second.
Second.
Motion is made, second. Any questions?
I have a.
Yes?
Yeah, I have a few questions with the bills. Page 26, precision weather forecasting. Could we shine some more light on that? Please.
Yes. We use precision weather forecasting as part of our RFP contract for snow and wobble. We actually use that to measure the depth of snow in conjunction with payment towards the contract. So it goes by the zip code and it's in our RFP that. We used to use TF3, which was always well off from what actually fell here in Smithfield. And we switched about maybe six years ago to this service. Not only does it do forecasting, give us forecasts ahead of time of what snowfall is going to be, it gives the actual snowfall totals for your zip code.
Because I noticed back in the November meeting that there was weather, is it WeatherWorks Allosi?
WeatherWorks, yes. Both work in conjunction with each other.
So why do we need both?
One monitors the weather more accurately. I shouldn't say more accurately. Gives you real time, you can talk to a meteorologist. That's weatherworks.com if you can do that. And the other one gives us accurate measurements in conjunction with our RFP. So that when the storm removal contractor would give us a bill saying we plowed eight inches of snow, we can say, no, it was really 4.2.
Okay, gotcha. Because I guess I was just wondering, you know, all the free services that are out there, whether it's local news, media, weather apps, stuff like that, if it's just for predicting, it has anything to do with canceling school for weather events?
Here's where it comes in real crucial. Every storm is different and they change as they go along. What this program will do is you can actually talk to a meteorologist saying, things sometimes just, you see it, things sometimes just happen directly in this area and it might not happen in hot Smithfield. You might get differences of whatever weather-related storm would be. You need to know timing so that we can plow in accordance, and you need to know duration. That is where it is most important, where it comes in.
Would we be able to do that without this $1,500 expense? Just using.
So if I say, go to my Channel 10 app, it shows me just that radar forecast, no, we'd be more accurate with what we have with this program. We use everything possible during a storm to try to get it right. And you know, at the end of the day, storms change by, and being part of many storms that come forward, storms change by 15 minutes to 20 minutes. One minute it's saying it's leaving and we're still looking outside and it's still snowing. This is where it comes in very crucially.
Gotcha. I was just, at a brief glance, I mean, I was just thinking, particularly over the past few years, I mean, any threat of snow, crow books have gone home, school is canceled, and sometimes to the detriment of like, we wake up in the morning as a parent or students and be like, well, that was a bust, you know? So this, on its face, just seems a little excessive.
No, when we're talking $1,500, it would pay off just in one storm in reference to how we would time and be ready to have school. Whether we have a one-hour delay, whether we have a two-hour delay, how we get ahead of a storm and how we know when a storm is going to truly end. Because what you don't want to do is say, you have a two-hour delay and the storm turns on you, then you have a cancellation. So we try to get as much accurate information out to the public as we can.
I have a question. I think we'll pitch on that because, but I think regardless, if a storm changes, if we have this program or not, like you said, it's only 15 minutes, regardless if we have it, we can't control if a storm changes, right? Like I feel like a lot of times we do have that where we're like, oh, we just misjudged the snow in the past. I can think of just in the past couple of years. So I would be interested for us to track it to see how accurate this is working for us. Yeah, just to see, give it like, I don't know, give it this year and see next year and revisit it and see, is it worth it?
Only, very good point. The only thing is, like, I guess I'm the person that uses it the most during a storm, constantly calling the meteorologists to see like, where, there's different things with snow. There's heavy snow, there's light snow. These are all the questions that I'm asking because it's going to take us longer to plow the snow. We can't stack it as high. Those are all rational things that happen during a storm. Is it going to go dry? Is it going to go wet? What's the wind going to be? Is the wind going to pick up and blow back over where we plow? Those are all the things that we track. Sometimes we win, sometimes we lose.
Right, just like typical news too. It's like, I feel like it's just, you know.
I just, I guess it's a real time thing. That's understood. The town uses the same programs too, in conjunction.
Okay.
This might be a good time just to explain how we predict and the decisions to whether it's a snow day or not. It usually starts with, um, do we talk four o'clock in the morning when there are these predictions? So we are looking at the forecasts in between. We're also talking to emergency management services, the DPW, to make sure what the conditions of the roadways are. Also speak with my surrounding superintendents just to see what their conditions are. So all of this starts about four o'clock in the morning and we know I have to make a decision because I want to get that call out to parents before 5:30. We also call the bus department to see what shape is transportation in. So if we get this very sudden snow, how quick can they get crews in there and will that determine whether we need an extra hour or two in the morning because we can't get the buses ready? So there's a lot of mechanisms that go into, it's not just forecasting and fingers crossed. And certainly I remember two years ago, right, my friend, you and I, all the forecasts, it was going to be an avalanche, canceled after-school activities, it was going to be, did everything that we could, and he and I are sitting at my window and there were a couple of little flakes and I started to pray. I prayed for snow because it was one of those that were a bust. But we've been pretty on, we haven't had many that we've had to, certainly, I think there's only been one or two cancellations over the three years, fingers crossed, this will be a mild winter. But there's a lot of consternation and discussion and not just forecasting, but also looking at, you know, what will be the impact and the bottom line is safety for kids traveling.
One quick follow-up question. You mentioned that the town uses it too. Does Todd Manny have it at emergency too? Like, how many times are we paying for this across the whole town?
I don't know if Todd Manny has it. I know the town does use it.
Right, and well, I'm thinking like DPW, emergency management, us, like, are we?
Todd has a much more sophisticated one. In fact, I have his predicting the snow that is supposed to come in tonight. So I have a variety of different screenshots from Todd.
Okay, thank you.
With a motion, what else? One last. That almost furthers my argument that this is excessive and we don't need it.
Right.
Particularly if it's a coordinated effort. So here's where I'm really coming from. The weather app has nothing to do with kind of, or my mindset is, well, I'm just looking at it as every dollar not spent in the classroom is just that, another dollar that's not spent in the classroom. So I have the utmost faith that we're still going to be able to make as responsible and good decisions as possible if we didn't have this secondary weather forecast.
Okay, now, one thing, just to note, we are approving bill right here. If we want to bring it up to talk about at a future point, we can, okay? This is not, I mean, technically the way this is worded is paying the bill, not discuss whatever. So if you do feel we should have it on the agenda, we can.
Well, this is a yearly contract, so we would be able to talk about it until next year.
Well, then, then I would, if that's, if you feel strong enough, I'd say the only thing you can do is hold it and.
Don't pay the bill yet. You can make a.
But then, but then we'd have to figure it out pretty fast and we're right in the middle of the snow season.
Could we make a motion to eliminate that for future discussion and pay the rest of the bills?
Well, you can't. I mean, you can do that, but then keep in mind, you won't have to, if this is one year, you won't have that service while we're here in the middle of the snow season.
We'll just have the other service that was purchased in November and then the town service.
Which does a different thing. What I'm getting at is, I mean, this is just my opinion, I think we should continue forward and next year we should look into this stuff and decide how many we need, how much is coordinated, whatever, but it's not, we're talking to bill there, not whether we're, you know, keeping something. That has to be a separate item. Okay.
I have a question. Can you confirm that the bill is for a yearly contract and that if we didn't do it this month, would we not be able to still go into contract next month or the year? Like, when does our contract actually end?
I think it's 2-1. I'm just looking at this invoice here, it says.
I see the invoice, yeah.
I see 2-125, but I.
Yeah, I think it's for a yearly contract. And I think it's, one of them is tied into our RFP, which I think is tacky weather. Oh, no, snow, what did you, snow.
Ah, there's WeatherWorks, there's, and then this one, big question, there's precision weather forecasting.
WeatherWorks is where it's tied to our RFP, so we.
That, that one was already in November.
Could I add, if I may? I'm sorry, Angelo. It says, under the invoice thing, it says renewal 2-125. So this tells me it's effective 2-125.
And it goes for the full year.
So if I could just, I just want to just point one thing out that's not related to this. A lot of these bills that come before you are for purchases that are already encumbered. So sometimes you're paying for bills that we already have goods or receipts, the purchases are already incumbent via purchase or receipts. So technically, sometimes bills are being paid for things that have delivered. That's usually when you get invoices. So I often wondered why when we bring this, it's approval, usually it's just, it's usually just a warrant that they just approve and pay it and it's not approving whether we're going to have it. And I don't know if legal could weigh into that, maybe I'm wrong. That's usually how I understood this because we encumber purchases when you have a purchase order and that's when you actually commit to the service. This is different though. Mr. LeMonge is right, this is probably a contract renewal, but a lot of things on here that say supplies or tuitions, those are purchases that are encumbered by purchasers.
So every school committee in the state does things a little bit differently. Some school committees will have all of the invoices that have been paid come before them and then they vote on it, which kind of makes some school committee members, their mind explode.
Right, yeah.
This situation you just described is what happens here in Smithfield. Other school districts don't, their school committees don't vote on these bills at all. When you adopt a budget pursuant to policy, that, the administration then moves forward with following through on that, on that budget. The bills really are a method for your oversight to do what is happening right now. You see something, you have a question about it, that comes up at a later meeting, you can then have a discussion about it. That's how it's supposed to work. I agree with the business manager that approval, in some instances, but not at all, could be a little bit misleading. We're in the consent agenda, so we're consenting, the school committee rather is consenting to these bills, but in some instances, you could be incurring some type of liability if products were delivered and then all of a sudden you decide, I'm not going to have the school department pay that invoice. So that makes sense?
Makes, it makes sense. So the time to address this has come in dawn and it would be at the February budget meeting to ensure that it's not next year's budget that is approved for next time.
Well, I think you can have the discussion at any time. I think the concern is the administration saying that this product is needed and if you don't approve it tonight and we can't get it or use it in the next few weeks, then we're going to be without.
And please know that my comment was not specifically on this. It was more about.
Understood.
The office supplies, the things like that. And hence, when we come before the committee with contracts, other ones that are above the $10,000, that is in advance before we make a purchase order, usually this report is in like legal counsel, I just mentioned, usually this is after we've purchased things and we've encumbered it with a purchase order and now we have the invoice in hand and we're just coming before the council approval to, A, cut the check or, you know what I mean? And again, it had nothing to do with that. I just wanted to make that comment because I did think it was odd when I came here after, you know, the years I worked in both districts, it was usually, you know, place the bills, it was like a consent to make payment. Thank you, sorry.
I'll make a note and we'll discuss this, you know, probably September 1st or somewhere. They're heading into, well, well into the season and we can look at it, we can find out all the stuff, things that were brought up tonight. Any further questions?
I have a question, but legally I'm allowed to ask it because it's not like, it's on the agenda because it's this whole topic, so Sean stopped me, I guess. The only question I would have is something like this, we'd have to not approve it in September, it'd be with budget, but in order for us to prove now or not for the budget?
What he's saying is we give, we approve the entire budget. That gives them, the administrators, the authority to manage the money for these operations.
That's correct.
We would have.
Our budget is not specific to these.
Can we request line item budgets of what's in the budget? Because when we get the budget, we get a number per department, but we don't really know, it's just free will budget. So I think that would be, I don't know, at this point I can request that or is that like for us to.
Well, under what we're doing now, I would say no. If you want to discuss it at a future point, we can, but our budgets, you know, for instance, on maintenance, et cetera, are not going to show every little line item like that. But we can talk about that in a future day, how you want to see it. Okay? So we have before us the current budget, I mean, the current consent items. Any further questions or comments? I thought everybody's going to talk about how we're paying, spending money on compost for our food budget, you know? Apparently we're serving compost in the schools, I don't know. Okay, no further questions. All in favor, say aye. Against, nay. The ayes have it. Now we will move on to the High School Student Representative Report, which we used to have two representatives tonight, so ladies.
Next Friday, January 24th, will mark the close of the second quarter at Smithfield High School. Therefore, many students' schedules will be shifting the following week as they begin new elective classes. And today, Smithfield High School's Future Business Leaders of America Chapter hosted a professional leadership panel in the Smithfield High School auditorium where six speakers, including Dr. Hogan, from the industries of business and finance, law and legal services, health and medical services, and engineering and architecture, were invited to speak to the chapter's membership body of 147 students. Specifically, speakers discussed their career experiences as well as provided advice as to how students could approach their professional lives after high school. Overall, it was an extremely successful event with many members reporting how much they enjoyed the speakers' stories as well as their invaluable words of wisdom. Smithfield High School students are thrilled for Winter Ball, which will be held on January 24th at Rhodes on Patuxent. All grades are invited to attend and students have been selecting their tables this past week. Additionally, students in the elementary schools began their winter benchmark star testing for reading and math on January 6th and will continue until Friday. These test scores guide classroom instruction and interventions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number six, discuss, review, and approve an overnight high school boys hockey trip to Ridgefield, Connecticut and Middletown, Connecticut to play two hockey games.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, I believe, an annual trip. It does require the approval of the school committee because it is overnight. The trip would be departing tomorrow after school, about 3:00, and then returning late day on Saturday.
Okay, this will require a motion.
Motion to approve the overnight high school boys hockey trip to Ridgefield, Connecticut.
And a second. A second. Motion has been made, and second, any questions about this?
Can I just, is this a, have we done this one before, you said?
From what I understand from the AD, yes, and also from the head of the ice hockey, the coach, Mr. Jackson.
And is there a reason it came in today and not last meeting?
Very good question. I asked, I asked the same. So I have asked our AD to ensure that at the beginning of each season, all permission slips and trips are planned so that we can tighten this up. I believe the coach had given this on December 20th to the AD. So again, with the vacation, I received it through Dr. Monaco's office after, well after the last meeting. So this is the first meeting that it could be approved and again, it is for tomorrow. So I agree, there should be a lot more notice.
Yeah, and I, obviously, we want the athletes to attend these trips. I just think we really need to tighten up the process on this, but both of you approve of this or do not?
I don't know about the policy.
It follows policy. This is a trip, this is, I believe, a very well-organized trip. There's chaperones, the buses, we have all the documentation for insurance, parent sign-offs have occurred. Again, this is late coming in, however, I would, I would like it to be approved so that they can move forward.
Thank you.
Questions? Okay, motion made, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Item number seven, second reading and approval of the district's public comment and participational school committee meeting plan, policy EEDH.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the second reading. I believe I incorporated the additions from the school committee members that are in this policy. So it is, they are highlighted in red. So what this policy provides is public comment up to five minutes. However, at certain times, at the discretion of the school committee chairperson, that can be adjusted to three minutes in our discussion about it at the last meeting. This would be on rare occasion and certainly it has the section, if you look on the back page, where members of the committee may also vote, by majority vote of the committee to extend the hours as well. That is in keeping with our other types of policies as well.
Okay, this will require a motion and a second, and then we can have the discussion.
Motion to approve the adjustments to the public comment speaking.
Okay, a second. 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 Motion is made, second. Questions, comments on how it stands?
I still struggle with it. I don't like, I know we spoke about it last time. I don't like limiting anybody and I know we have to at a certain point, but I still would like it to stay at the five minutes. I understand we can vote to extend time of open forum, but I still feel like, and I like that addition, so the majority can vote, but I never want to have anybody feel like they're going to be cut off, so I would be against just the three minutes and keeping it at five minutes. I also had a question regarding people who come in to speak and they're only allowed to put their name on in the beginning of the meeting, if we could.
Well, actually, that's not true. That's up there the entire time. I will make a better chance to.
Is it written in here though? I had.
No, no, they, in fact, we've had many people come up right at the very end and put their name on before we do it.
I had that, because I had, I had a question, somebody questioned me on that part and I would agree that throughout the whole meeting, anybody should be able to come up with their name up and, yeah, be able to.
Once we start public forum, then anybody can.
Just determine if they're, is that what they made available directly prior, but it doesn't say they can't.
Okay, all right, so it'll be made available and then maybe we could just clarify that too. Throughout the whole meeting, you know, sign up in a, as they come in to sign up, that's the order, but that it is available throughout the whole time. But as far as shortening it to three minutes, I would be against that.
Other questions?
I had another question.
Sure.
Just giving this more thought and getting feedback from those people in the town as Can we ever foresee a time where we don't allow every single person that comes in wants to speak to speak? And I guess not just this body, but just moving forward.
Are you talking at a regular meeting?
Regular meeting, public forum.
Yeah, well, our meeting ends, we have a half an hour for public forum comments or whatever. And keep in mind, that's not for an agenda item, that's for something that's not on the agenda. It's really, somebody can bring up whatever issue, I don't like the color of my tie. And five minutes, six people can talk. If the school committee wants to continue on, we can vote and say, yeah, let's add another half an hour and people can keep coming to talk. We can't comment on any of that stuff. It's just so people can talk. If there's an issue that is so big that everybody's going to come out of the rafters, we're probably going to have a workshop or something where everybody can come out of the rafters and get, and talk about it, okay? We've had a couple of topics, I can think of over the years, where people wanted to come and talk on something. I mean, we had a bunch of them during COVID, to be honest with you, okay? And, you know, we're not, we're going to let people talk. And you got to break this into two things. During the meeting, what's on the agenda? I can speak for myself, I've never stopped anybody from talking. I haven't really sat down and said, oh, you're going to get x number of minutes, get on, get on with it. Most of the time, people have a very specific question about something that's right there in front of them and we discuss it. The other stuff is kind of a wild west because, like I said, they can talk about anything. But I haven't seen us, actually, during COVID, things got cut off and people stopped. I did not run the committee, so I can't tell you, I didn't do it, but it did happen there. But in general, if it's a big issue, people are going to be able to talk. The only reason that's in there is if there's a bunch of people that want to come in and talk about one issue. I'm not, no, I'm not, or I shouldn't say one issue, want to talk about something at the end of the meeting for the most part. If they want to talk about one issue, I'm going to, I'm not going to stop anybody from getting up and allowing them to talk. The only difference between three and five minutes is, you know, is the length. And five minutes, I should have put a timer on here, five minutes is a long time and if everybody's talking five minutes. So it's really about efficiency in the meeting. It's not about stopping anybody, it's not about small, you know, cutting anybody off.
I was, I was more referring to the, will not exceed 30 minutes total.
And that's up to the school committee. School committee wants to keep going?
No, I guess the perception, at least the feedback that I was getting, and I can understand why it's viewed this way, is, okay, well, that at least affords the ability of the discretion of the chair, not to suggest it's inappropriate, but just in general, why would there be a time, if we're going to respect everyone's opportunity to come and speak, whether it's two people, one person. come and speak, whether it's two people, one person tonight, or just on a random evening, 15 people, that will exceed that time? I guess there's, there's no purpose other than to prevent people from speaking, to have a time limit, not per speaker, but just in general for, the, the form of speak, public, of public forum.
That item, public forum, doesn't even need to be on the agenda. It's not required by state law.
I understand that.
Period. So that's something that, when it came on into our rules, because it hadn't been in years ago, it was put on, and committee members felt, well, there's got to be some type of constraint, we're not going to sit here, you know, for, after an entire meeting and listen for another two hours or something like that. That, that's kind of the rationale that went into it.
I just, I guess I just sit there, and I'd be, going back to even the COVID days, I mean, and not that I expect something like that to come up, but I think if, if a topic came up that, that brought an audience of 15 people wanting to speak, I just don't like the language of the policy affording the opportunity to not allow them to all speak.
Right. Well, if the 15 people are on a, on a agenda item, they're all going to speak. In fact, we've let many of them speak, because sometimes they bring up an idea, the school committee starts kicking things around, and it goes back out. So it, I mean, there's a lot more time, whatever's going on. It's that last part. The, the, the public forum, or the open forum, I should say, where it, really nothing can be done about that. You know, 15 people want to come up and speak on whatever topic, all they're doing is speaking at that point. We can't comment. There's very little we can do during that particular second. Other than listen.
I think that's the other part. I think when we have 15 people come up that are passionate about something that has occurred in the school with their child, and we're shortchanging it per se, we're not listening, we're not getting ahead of it or understanding what's occurring in our schools as a committee. If we set up a workshop, it could take how long to set that up when we could hear about it and welcome feedback from the community? So that's also...
And, and keep in mind, they have other ways of getting that to us. It doesn't have to be, in fact, they have more timely ways of calling us or sending us emails.
They do.
And that can be, and we, we get those all the time, and we can respond within certain, we can't respond as a group, or we can...
It's hard sometimes to understand somebody's tone through an email. You know, like, when somebody's face-to-face, the connection that you have with the person to understand their feelings is a lot different than within an email. And I come off very different.
And I'm just going to say, again, for just purely, you know, running a meeting, if we get a number of emails, it's going to be on the agenda. It's not just going to be out there, you know, where we're not going to discuss it at some point.
For this committee, but future committees, who knows?
But then other committees, you know, can change these things to...
Right, because then it takes time, and then they, I mean, we could all come out and speak.
Can I ask?
I'll do whatever I want.
No, no.
Can I ask what brought this one? Did we have public concern? Usually, when an item's going to be on the agenda, we've heard, you know, some sort of rumbling in the district, or we know something's coming down the pipe from Dr. Bart or whatnot. Can I ask what brought this one to priority? Was there a request from...
No, there was, I mean, I, I was the one who put it on, because if you recall, the last time we had a public workshop, we actually allowed people three minutes to talk. At that workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, as opposed to five minutes. And that, and that meeting, the way that one went, that went long, 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 and everybody had an extra two minutes, it would have gone longer and longer and longer. And at a certain point, you know, what is really getting done? And again, you can look at those things. I know we keep them as to how many people come up and talk. We've got a number of meetings where nobody's talked, or one or two people, and generally, you know, when it's a couple of people and they bring something up, we can digest it. That's my thought on this. We can keep it just as it is. We don't have to accept these changes if the committee doesn't feel comfortable with it.
I'm, I'm struggling with this one, because I just, I would never want a parent to come for us and feel, even if we didn't give them any reason to feel that way, just feel like they can't pour their heart out to us about something that's concerning their child. You know, I mean, when people come here, it's because it's something that's important to them. And I just feel, like, as an elected official, it's my duty to hear every concern of the public, even if it's something that we, I don't align with or that I'm uncomfortable by. Like, I, one of, while we were recently campaigning, one of the things that we heard repeatedly was just transparency and communication. And, you know, I'm, now that I'm getting something into this committee, I can see the district makes very ample efforts to communicate with parents. But I just, I would never want them to feel like they couldn't come here and, and just speak openly about any issue. So that, that's kind of just where I'm, kind of struggling with it. I, I, I understand how it's up to the committee's discretion, but there'll be other committees after us, and, you know, I, I don't have a child in the district of my own yet, but like, I could have to come stand for someday about something that really fires me up or that I'm feeling quite passionate about, and I would hate to feel limited in that.
Maybe we don't necessarily have to, we could just go...
Well, there's some, there's some changes, or like grammatical changes and whatnot, and like...
Can we keep the grammatical changes? Go ahead, please.
So if you want to withdraw and then identify what changes you do want as a committee, and those that you don't, and then vote on that.
Give me a moment to review the grammatical changes that are non...
We could just make an amendment to say, keep your time limits the same. That's the only thing people...
We'd be great, that's easy to get.
That's probably the easiest way to do it. But it shows up in two places.
Two places, but then a third place on page four, as far as the extension, right there, second bullet. And I mean, that can stay, that's not a, in my opinion, so what I'm looking at right now is page four.
Three to five. Five to three. Which of the two do you want to change?
Well, in page four, the second bullet down in red says, however, members of the committee may by majority vote increase the time of open forum. The chairperson may also extend the time of open forum. I have no problem with that. That's, that's voting to extend. That's not a, so I, so I will make an amendment to strike from the motion, the two items that reduce the minute time to three minutes, leave the part about extending open forum with a majority vote, and leave the grammatical corrections at the very end of the document, which are very minor, if you don't have it in front of you.
So this is an amendment that you just made?
Mm-hmm.
An amendment, that will need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion. We're going to vote on the amendment. Everybody understand? The amendment, which just basically took out the, the three and five minute part, left it at five minutes. Everything else is the same. Okay? We're voting on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Now, we're going to vote on the amended motion. Everybody know who's going? Okay. So it's motion made a seconded. Further discussion, any questions? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Boom. All right, the ayes have it. So keeping it at five minutes, making all the other changes that were in there, and that's that.
Yep.
Item eight. Discuss, review, and approval of RGB invoice number 6683-31, not to exceed $472.50. And we have a copy of the invoice in the back.
So before you is the November services for the OPM for the Boyle project. It is $472.50. It's invoice number 668331. It was approved at the Boyle Field Committee meeting held on January 2nd, and asking, seeking your approval for payment, meaning on of not to exceed $472.50.
Okay.
Motion to approve RGB invoice totaling $472.50.
And a second.
Second.
Motion has been made a seconded. Any further questions? Not in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. The ayes have it. Item nine. Discuss, review, and approval of Green Acres Landscaping Payment Application Number 10, RGB number 6683-5, not to exceed $84,117.09.
Also, Boyle Committee, as you just mentioned, approved at the committee meeting held on January 2nd for Green Acres Landscaping, and again, seeking approval for payment of the application number 10, not to exceed 84,117.09.
This requires a motion.
Motion to accept, review, we're accepting what, RGB number six...
Green Acres. Green Acres.
Yes, Green Acres.
Oh, Green Acres, sorry. Motion to approve Green Acres number 10. Is it that one? The number, number 10, number 6683, not to exceed $84,117.09.
Motion is made, we need a second.
Second.
Motion has been made a seconded. Further questions? I just have one. You've got to be winding down on whatever, the district, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize. We were talking about RGB. I just have a question about if we scroll down to, gosh, page seven, maybe? We, there's a section where we talked about unused allowances and then work billed against the unused allowances. So I assume this is just, there was, you know, money that was allocated for certain funds, and then we were shuffling things around. For instance, you know, there's a couple of things that make sense to me for shuffling around, but then there was one thing in here in particular, the lowering of the ADA window to meet requirements, there's a cost in there. That was, should have, in my opinion, been absorbed by the company for their error, the height of an ADA compliance window. Do we have any idea? Is this saying that we're paying $10,000 for their error?
What page is that on?
It's on page seven of 10. It's under work to be billed against the unused allowances, right in the middle, concession window, $9,384.
Oh, I have the April. Yeah. Can I look at your screen?
Yeah.
Concession window, Angelo.
Yes.
It's $9,000.
$384.
$384. Cost to lower to meet ADA requirements.
Correct.
So when that window was put in, it was the wrong height from the round. It was found later on, and the cost, we're doing just a repair, was that $10,000. And as far as saying whose fault it was, it doesn't fall in the contract of all the owner. It was just how the building, the fabricated building came in and was put together, that height was off. And honestly, it was only off by an inch and a half, but an inch and a half is an inch and a half.
Yeah. I disagree. I mean, somebody, somebody has to accept fault. There was an error. It's a human error, it's totally understandable. But was it our fault or was it their fault? I mean, ADA compliance doesn't change from day to day. It's not like, well, we were talking about the weather and we can't predict, like, this is a pretty, in the construction industry, I feel like this is a very straightforward requirement, and it was missed by the company if we told them it had to be ADA compliant? Or did we not tell them it had to be ADA compliant? And if we didn't, doesn't everything have to be ADA compliant?
That is correct. And just keep in mind also that there still is over $200,000 retainerage for Green Acres, and this, this portion is still in the discussion.
But we're approving tonight to use the allowance of the funding that we have to pay for this.
Correct.
So how do we go back?
You have to pay for the contract that, that did the error. There was a repair that had to be paid, so you have to pay the contract.
I disagree.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Right, so what, what is our process to appeal this? If we're, are we already in the process of doing something?
We're in the, we're in the process of reviewing, there's a few things that we're reviewing as far as appealing. The height of this concrete in front of that area, so all those things are under appeal.
So I, just speaking for myself, would not feel comfortable approving, paying them these funds when we are in the process of an appeal that we're not sure, that we haven't had a full discussion on yet.
What's the process of the appeal?
It goes into a, it goes into a punch list item, as far as, but you still have to have, to be able to have opened that concession stand, you have to have it ADA compliant.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah. Like I just said, we're paying for somebody else's error to do it when this should have been done, right? Like, so that, I can understand why you're, you know, confused or it's, I'm confused on it, honestly, on why we would have to pay for an error.
And as we move forward in closing out this project with the amount of monies that are left, there are things that, like this, that will come forward to say, like, are we going to pay for this? But, and it's at the end of the day, when we draft the letter, I'm saying, this is what we're paying for, and this is what we're holding back when you retain it.
Right, but once we've already paid it, it's much more challenging to get our money back or to get them to do that.
If we would have paid our retainerage in full, I'd say yes. But when you're holding back $200,000...
For a job that was, was six months late and had multiple errors at the end.
Well, yeah, but the point you're saying is that the money is sitting there in the bank, not to be paid yet, and you can do that reconciliation later on, and we can say...
Along with other...
We had $9,384, and let's split it 50/50, or let's do, not, whatever.
But if it's in the contract to do the work, you wouldn't have opened the concession stand. That's the glitch that you're in as you move things along.
Right, but the concession stand is open at this point.
Can I, can I make a, can I make a suggestion? You can vote, as Angelo just mentioned, that you have retainerage, you could vote with that caveat in there, that the committee would like a resolution to hold back that amount from Green Acres. But again, we are, you know, Green Acres is paying the vendor, because the vendor did get asked to come in and work, but the retainerage is what is being held. The committee and legal counsel can say, you could actually take the vote with that in there, that you are voting but not approving owning, paying Green Acres for until the appeal is resolved. So there's still money that's owed to them.
Multiple punch list items. I mean, has the, the dent in the roof been fixed and, you know, we, there's a...
Let's take one, but let's see, what is the one first?
I, I agree, this school committee, if it has concerns about this particular item, its motion should incorporate what the business manager just indicated. And I just have a question, when, when the payment goes forward, will it be communicated either tomorrow or, or whenever that's made to Green Acres, that essentially the payment's being made under, under protest? That there's a concern about the, the fact that we're, that monies are being expended for a error.
You could, but in the end...
And I understand your point about the retention.
Using that comes right when time to retain should be paid in full. The letter goes for all the items that, even A, were not corrected, edges made according to the contract, and then that letter goes out with all those items on there. And then the total amount is kept by owner.
And so to make sure I understand this, the retainerage would be used at the end, that's money that's still owed, that we would not pay to Green Acres until we sorted out through that punch list as far as who took responsibility for which items?
Correct. And that's the these right there, who is truly responsible, so goes back and forth.
And when does that happen? And how do we make sure that we see a detailed list ahead of that, and that so it's not coming ahead to us again, once it's already been approved by the Boyle Committee, and now it's, it's, you know, for lack of a better term, just waiting for us to, you know, we're going backwards. It's very challenging to have the conversations on some of these.
I don't understand why backwards is, it's how it moves, moves the project forward.
Yes, yes, Bill lies and just saying, we need to get ahead of that decision being made.
The integrity of what we would hold back, that's what the cover, what we believe is a contractor's responsibility, not the owner's. But yet, keeping the project moving forward is two things running parallel.
Right. But so who's determining what that amount of money is?
The architect will do that in the end. The architect will determine whose ownership it would be, and we can debate, we can debate that.
Where? Here or at the Boyle Committee?
First place, it should be at the Boyle Committee, because that's who gets everything first.
Right.
Correct.
I just stuck, the attorney thinks we should amend our motion. Basic language Ms. Devine had given us along the lines of to hold this against the retained money, right? Exactly how did you phrase it?
So I think I said that you could make your approval of payment to Green Acres with the protest of holding, you know, you are contesting the payment of the nine thousand? Nine hundred and four, you're contesting?
Three hundred and eight.
I'm sorry, I was there. It's not just that item, it's multiple items, right?
Well, but in this bill.
Is there other things in this bill?
There is, well, so the scoreboard design change, I'm not sure why that's in here, like, that was donated to us. That, that last nine hundred ninety-two dollars was donated by a local business to cover that. So why are we now using, I just wanna make sure that that's not a charge out of there. And then that makes me think there could be other things. And there's, I have no visibility to the fact that the building letters cost seven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. It seems astronomical, but I can't tell you that it's, that it's not. You know, I, we, we paid seven hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars for an aluminum box smaller than my three thousand square foot house that costs less to build than that. So we wanna make sure we're getting everything out of it right down to the last minute. And we're, our window of opportunity to make sure that we're being delivered the product that we paid for is closing. And I know with every time we approve this, so.
So I have nine ninety-two and ninety-three eighty-four right now, at least if you have a question.
Yes, but I wouldn't.
We want, we want a motion to say that we're paying this under protest for those two amounts. We have to put a number, I, I think we have to put a number.
Okay.
And under protest for the, for the final reconciliation, the final approval, what you're saying. So we need a, we need an amendment that gets that point across for those two amounts.
If we have more questions, is now the time before the amendment's made?
If there's more, yeah, that's gonna affect what we're voting on now, it'll be the time, unless, I mean, we can keep making motions.
No, no, right, that way. The largest line item in the work to be billed against the unused allowances is two hundred, it's, it's over a quarter of a million dollars. Plaza work, drainage ads, plantings, curvings, et cetera. Et cetera bothers me. I have to, it's concerning because it's just so broad. I mean, it's, there's no specificity. The plantings and curvings, that's in addition to the, my numbers might be wrong. Hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars that the project had already allocated to plantings and curvings previously? Is this on top of that?
This is the plaza area. That was never incorporated with that.
Okay.
So this is the plaza area. One third five is on the backside of.
Got you. And the drainage?
Drainage.
None of that was included? Just, just clarification, the seven sixty-seven was just the structure?
Structure.
Backrooms, pumps, electrical.
Electrical, yes.
And no ceiling?
Ceiling only in the concession stand.
Okay. So what's the drop, the eight thousand four four six for a drop ceiling? Where's the drop ceiling?
Drop ceiling is located in the concession stand and in the ticket booth.
And maybe I missed, there stood the first thing that you said. The seven sixty-seven included the ceiling in the concession stand, but just not the ticket booth?
No, it incorporated, the drop, the drop ceiling was incorporated in that.
Okay.
So as you pay down.
So this eight thousand four four six for the drop ceiling is just a part of that larger number of seven sixty-seven just being allocated, okay?
Correct.
Do we know what the et cetera is? Do you know what the et cetera is?
No.
Do you understand?
If I understand what et cetera could be, but I, I would rather, I don't like to put et cetera either. So I think it was probably incorporated in just the language as far as that goes, but if you need a more detail right down to no et cetera, I, I'm not, I don't agree, disagree with.
I guess if it was a five-digit number as opposed to a six-digit number, et cetera, it wouldn't bother me so much, you know? But just looking at it, I mean, it's just.
Four digit, five.
Okay.
If this doesn't get paid tonight, what's the situation? We wait, can we wait till February second, third, whatever the meeting is?
I mean, I, again, I just processed, sorry, I just figured that thing. Um, I, I mean, I don't, the bill is dated on November nineteenth, it got approved at the January second. I mean, if there is concerns, I mean, it could be voted and held, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean, I don't have an exact, it doesn't mean that they are not going to be looking for it. I mean, I think we paid the last bill, maybe not in December, maybe? I think we did, we paid in December the last invoice, so, um, but again, they're valid questions. I think that, again, you have the OPM who would be able to explain this and that's.
Just the et cetera part.
Right. And same thing with the questions that Mrs. Sala has, you know, the nine nine two and the nine three eight four, the OPM should be able to answer them, but et cetera, uncomfortable, yes.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but you had asked for a detailed list of the money? And this is the first time we've seen this level of details in, for that breakdown? And it's when we're, again, to my point before, I know it is the process, but we're going backwards now. So we had asked for, we were all very concerned with that large number and this was part of the previous committee, and we asked for that breakdown. We knew that there was however many stalls, there were walls, bathroom sinks, whatnot, but we didn't have a breakdown like this. Now we have a breakdown, but it's not even a complete breakdown, it's a breakdown of what we're using the unused allowances for to build back to money that wasn't used. It just, it's not a very clear way to understand the costs and, and have those conversations. And then in addition, we have a, a list of punch list items that is very common for any project to have. I see those as two separate things, but that's my concern. Right, we didn't get the list that you asked for.
Yeah, well, I, I would, if we get enough questions here, I would just, my thought is, why don't we just table this or something? And we, and we deal with it, we have, we get, we reach out, get some questions, I mean, because they're different areas. One is, okay, who takes fault on an item that was done and probably shouldn't have been done and then had to be paid and fixed? Who, what's the story with the scoreboard design changes which were donated? And what is the et cetera on the biggest item, maybe two hundred sixty-three thousand? So I, I, we got a lot of questions here, you know, that we need to at least get some closure before we move on here.
We took note of all of the questions and concerns. I think it might be a good idea for us to contact the OPM tomorrow so that we can get the answers for the next school committee meeting so that you have that information in front of you in advance to decide whether to vote to approve.
Okay. So if, if you wanna go ahead and not approve this, my recommendation is, Amanda, you made the motion.
So motion to table.
Withdraw your motion.
Okay, so.
Yeah, just withdraw.
Withdraw my motion?
And then you seconded it, you're okay with that, okay? So the motion is withdrawn. Now a motion to table is in order.
Motion to table Green Acres landscaping payment in the amount of eighty-four thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and nine cents.
And a second? Second, okay. So we get the motion made and seconded, we're tabling it. It's gonna come up at our next meeting, we're gonna reach out for answers, if we don't have the answers, we'll be able, again, but that's how, what we're gonna do, okay? Everybody clear? Further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. Item number ten, discuss, review and approve FY twenty-five budget transfers.
Thank you. So before you this evening, we have three budget transfers that we're seeking approval. The first one is from the Special Education Department. It is for a reduction to transition services to transfer for tuition to the Rhode Island Alternative Academy in the amount of forty-one thousand one hundred forty dollars and thirty-two cents. This is for tuition for a student placed after the finalization of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget funds. The second is from the Business Department. This is for charter school tuition increase at Beacon Charter School. And we're taking it from savings at the Vocational Davies. This is due to there being zero students at the beginning of the year. We had one in the first quarter and then in quarter two, there was an additional two. So therefore, we are requesting twenty-eight thousand zero eight nine. In the first quarter, when we had one, that would be under the amount to come before the school committee. Now the twenty-eight thousand actually puts you over the ten, so that's with that one. And then the third one, I won't go through each line. The majority of it is object code fifty-four three eleven, which is the maintenance and repairs of fixtures and equipment for various different locations in the district. The total is eighty-five thousand three four nine. Most of it is going to the various different schools and coming out of some of the fifty-four three eleven, we were short by eleven thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, which we were moving out of the vehicle repairs. Again, you take it from the lines that you have availability at the time. Angelo, don't let any of the vehicles break down because we'll be in trouble if this gets approved. But again, the total for that allocation is eighty-five thousand three forty-nine thirty-two. Thank you.
Does require a motion and a second.
Motion to review and approve fiscal year twenty-five budget transfers.
And a second.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay, the ayes have it. Item eleven, superintendent's report. We're gonna need a screen.
Uh, yes, please. I have a lot of news to share with the committee.
Behind door number one.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Now I can just read it.
The input. I know, I want, do you have to switch the channel now or not?
It's on four. I think it's more the input of what the TV is.
Ah, in go, there you go.
Terrific. Thank you. I wanna thank the Valley Breeze for featuring us on the front page today and recognizing Smithfield High School, receiving a four out of five accountability rating. Certainly, this speaks to the increase in graduation rate. When I first came in, it was ninety-one percent, it was ninety-five point two percent last year. That's on-time graduation, it's a little bit higher if we account for five and six-year graduation rates. So ninety-five percent, we're heading definitely in the right direction. So a lot of work and congratulations to the teacher-staff administration and central office administration, definitely toward, especially to our kids and families because that is something really to be proud of. In addition, and this was not added in the article, and appreciate the work that the Valley Breeze did, but twelve percent of the students at the high school exceeded expectations, that's coming from RIDE, over two years on the English Language Arts SAT. So great news. The participation rate is also between ninety-eight and one hundred percent for all five of our schools. So our students are coming in, they are taking the assessments. And again, the assessments are one measure, but they are a data point, you know, that show us also where we're doing well and certainly some areas where we do need to grow. So we look at the data and we do drill in in our schools at central office in terms of what are some of the skills that perhaps when we look at the subsets, we need to concentrate more in terms of instruction. But certainly, we wanna increase our ELA and math scores, not happy with where they are right now, but in terms of surrounding areas, I think we're doing, we're doing very well. We know that we can do better and we will do better. To support those efforts, we will have Khan Academy extra support for our high school students. That's for SAT prep. That will be starting as soon as we can get students rostered. So I anticipate that being relatively quickly, that will be on demand, that students and families can use at home, that is a free service. That was through RIDE and we decided that we wanted to be part of that initiative and offer that. In addition, we are, we have determined to move forward with looking into and contracting with Hazel Health. This is a virtual healthcare, I had mentioned this at the last school committee meeting, so this has been vetted. Hazel Healthcare is the largest virtual healthcare organization for students and schools in the nation. It was contracted by RIDE and offered to all of the school districts in the state of Rhode Island. There is no cost to the district or to families. One of the benefits, and again, this would be something, and I wanna really accentuate this, this would be offered, but it requires parental consent. So it would not just occur in the schools or just happen at home. There is a consent process. They are licensed Rhode Island social workers and clinicians that are available. The sessions in general are forty-five minutes. Part of those sessions include intake with families. So if this were to be used at home, we wanna offer it for our, our students and families in the middle school and the high school as a start. The other advantage of this is that there are multilingual speakers in there, so not just Spanish or French. There is a variety, I believe it was thirty different languages, so that all students really could benefit from this. And they try to match the provider with the individual students. So that's why that intake process is really key. More information, once we finish going through the contract, having the attorneys complete the review, we'll be going out to families. But certainly, Dr. Monica, Mrs. Kurdel, myself, the counselors at the high school, the middle school, and the administrators were online, speaking directly with Hazel Healthcare. So this will be an option, I hope that we'll be able to roll out to our families. I also wanted to give the committee an update on proposed renovation projects that are happening here. As you're all aware, although many of our community, community members may not be aware, we were able to, and thanks to Angelo and his team of maintenance workers, we were able to paint fourteen classrooms in this high school building. That includes any repairs to any of the walls. This started during the summertime and through great scheduling here at the high school, continued during the fall. So the classrooms were refreshed with new paint, new ceiling tiles, thanks to the school committee. Those classrooms also received new furniture. So I wanted to make sure that our community members know that the students and the teachers are ecstatic about having new furniture and just refreshed classrooms that are here. Also, if you look throughout the main hallways of this building, all of the ceiling tiles have been replaced, which is terrific, as well as in the front area of Gallagher Middle School. There's still more work to be done, but we do have a plan for refreshing the schools, focusing on the middle school and the high school each year. In addition, in terms of the renovation project or wish, what this is, is as the school committee knows, we have contracted with a project manager. Colliers approved by both the school committee and the town council to work on our five and ten-year plan focused here at the high school and also at the middle school, looking at particular repairs. And two emergency projects. And by emergency, this means for health and safety to upgrade facilities. We are looking at, and again, this was a priority of the school committee, relocating our intensive special education. our intensive special education students, those classrooms that, as you know, are towards the back of the, of the school in a, there are multiple rooms there, but not optimal. I have wanted to move them, move the students to be more centrally located. We are looking at, and again, at the very, very beginning stages of redesigning the rooms that are at the back of this library-media center and changing where our ISE students are living while they're in school. So this is a centrally located, vibrant area of the school. We are out to bid for an architect so that we know what it would take to make the rooms ADA compliant, to include a kitchen, to bring a bathroom in, and to make sure that the rooms, this is, this is something that is feasible. In return, our IT department, which is housed here, would take the room of ISE, which they would like. It is, has a garage door that is functional, that would, I think, work better for them as well. Going into the second or the last bullet there, staying with the update, one of the requirements of RIDE is that we renovate, do some renovations on the flooring of the culinary room. That is right across the hallway here. That would include remediation of any asbestos in the tiles and replacement of flooring, as well as pitching the floor so that there could be a drain in there. The architect is also going to design what that room and the renovations would be. So these are proposed projects. We are on a tight timeline. If this goes through, certainly, we would like to be able to start this project during the summer. So more information will be coming. Right now, we're out to bid. We had 12 firms do a walkthrough this week with Angelo and the OPM to look, look at the entire school, particularly those areas from what I understand that is a very, very good turnout of firms that have expressed interest. We'll be putting together the evaluation team and then I'll be coming back in February, hopefully with a decision after the scoring is done for approval from the school committee and then the town council. Again, just for the public, our career and tech education courses, there are five pathways at this high school. We are on track to open officially two of them. While the culinary arts program in sequence is occurring, we did receive final RIDE approval for culinary to be a CTE. And again, the facility will have to be upgraded by replacing that flooring. What this means is that students in that pathway, it's a three-year sequence in which they can earn, they, they learn skills, the competencies for hospitality and catering. We have a chef teacher that's in place. It is one of the most popular electives at this high school. And we will be partnering with Johnson &amp; Wales. So an informal partnership has already occurred, but there would be team teaching and students would be able to earn credits. I believe Dr. Monaco said up to 12 credits for students who are taking the CTE pathway. We will double-check on that, but that was my preliminary word. And secondly, the biomedical engineering, because we do have approval, teachers are very excited to receive the training this spring so that we can have that as our seventh CTE program. So those will be joining our business and finance, computer science, IT and cybersecurity, law and public policy, and our teacher preparation programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Now you have a 12 district professional development presentation. Is that a different screen?
It is.
I think, I think it's the same cord, though. We're just gonna switch the cords. I think you're saying you bet. How long it took Danny to get up and it just worked. Amazing. Okay. So I was really excited when this topic came up at the last school committee meeting because it's something that is, is an awesome part of my job, setting up the professional learning for the teachers in Smithfield. So I'm glad to have the opportunity to highlight it today. And this is a basic overview of it, and then certainly, you know, if you have any further questions about it, I'd be happy to go into it further. So I just started off with RIDE's definition. They actually just finished their latest high-quality professional learning guide, which I did put a link to so that you would have it there. And I don't think there's anything that's too surprising here, but it has been quite a shift from this kind of mentality of I go to a workshop and that's professional learning to, no, you know, it's really, certainly, there's that original dissemination of knowledge that's extremely important, but the real work comes into that active learning, that coaching, that the teachers collaborating and really working on things that are happening right within the classroom. And so all of our teachers need what they call PLUs, their professional learning units for recertification. Right now, because they're still phasing it in, teachers need anywhere from 75 to 100 to be recertified, but in the future, it's gonna be 20 per year. So typically, the professional certification is a five-year, and so therefore, that's where you get that, that 100. I'm really happy to tell you that most of our teachers have almost tripled that by the time they come to recertification because they have to submit logs to me. I have to go into the system and tell RIDE, yes, you know, they've done what they need to do in regard to professional learning units. So it's always nice to see. I always tell people, you know, you really just have to give me the 100, but I think they're, you know, proud of it, and so they include all of the professional learning units. And I just put RIDE's definition there of what a PLU is only because I do get a lot of questions about, you know, how about the bloodborne pathogen training, or how about the suicide prevention? Those are really requirements that are more safety requirements and don't necessarily fall under the definition of a PLU. One thing that I think is pretty unique to Smithfield is that we have a district PD committee that's written right into the contract. And so it's a 12-member committee that consists of the superintendent, myself, David, five teachers appointed by the president, and then another four administrators appointed by the superintendent. And the purpose of that PD committee is to plan the PD. I also put a link just so that everyone could see it if they're interested. It's also on our website, to the district professional development plan that I revise every summer. It's an important part of our grant funding. And so it ends up being, I don't know, maybe about 14 pages. And it just outlines our plan that, again, is developed collaboratively. We administer surveys to teachers, ooh, sorry, I touched something, surveys to teachers at the end of PD and then also just to ask, you know, what are some areas that you want more professional learning in? We plan and implement them, and then we provide other PD based on those areas that are listed. I also maintain, I send out maybe every about two weeks newsletter because in this district, our teachers this year and in years past, I don't know for how many years, we have the two professional development days that are five and a half hours, and then teachers complete another five and a half hours on their own. Those do have to be approved by administration, but that kind of gives them an opportunity to develop in an area that is either unique to them or they just really want to personalize on. So I send out newsletters every two weeks, just with a whole host of opportunities that are being offered throughout the state. Most of them are free, a few of them are cost, but teachers do have the opportunity to request that the district pay for that. And we do budget a certain amount of funds per teacher each year for those types of So I just put a list of examples here for you of some of the professional learning that we offer. So certainly, we have the contractual professional learning days that are five and a half hours. I did include a sample schedule. I'm gonna have to, I don't think it was there on the original that was uploaded to you all those, so I could certainly send it. But this is an example of our first PD day of the year, and it does take quite a bit of organization because, you know, as you can see here, we've got pre-K teachers, ISE teachers, classroom teachers, library, music, psychs and social workers, speech pathologists, and then, you know, as I scroll through for the middle school, it's all different professional development opportunities that are really unique to each department. And so, again, that's an area that I take pride in. We don't just offer something to all and have everybody go to it. We really differentiate according to the needs of the various departments. But certainly, I can, I can also send this to you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
The, so these courses are the ones that are selected by the 12-person committee, and I think it said that the five, five teachers are appointed. How often is that committee refreshed? And David, are you appointing five teachers, or are you getting 10 and you have to pick five? Or are you begging five teachers to be part of this? Thank you.
Maybe it's my professional development partner in crime.
The NEA Smithfield, basically, I put out an email and I asked for volunteers, and typically, it's the same people who volunteer. So the committee, with the exception of people retiring or leaving, pretty much stays the same.
Yearly, though, you, is that a yearly exercise? Thank you.
If you want to see them, we have a website. It's neasmithfield.org, and all of our committees are up to date that are pertinent to NEA Smithfield.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, David. And we do try to get representation from not only the different levels, but also special ed.
Yes.
It's like, we need to have that, you know, because it is, it's just different. Thank you.
When I send it out, I say who the need is. So if we had a high school teacher retire, I'll send it to the high school staff and say, you know, we're looking for a high school representative. So if we get that person we do, then I will send it out to the entire population if we need somebody and we didn't get a high school member to volunteer. Okay?
So it's not a fresh five every year you're replacing?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. And they do, you know, again, that's not our only input, you know, we have the department chairs, we have the ILT, you know, so that's, it's good.
Right. I just, my thought is, right, if the same five teachers are there every year, they're, you know, we're hoping that they're the voice of the entire body, but I think that's probably something that we would want to give an opportunity to all the teachers every year, as it being like a one-year position to be part of that committee.
So that would be a union decision because that's appointed by?
Yeah, that, that, all under hard discretion, too.
Oh, boy.
Decide what, you know, we'll do with our organization.
Yep.
Okay.
That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, again, I put that there, and that's typically what people think of as professional learning, but it's so much more, you know. So we have embedded consultation, particularly with special education. So there's just so far that workshop can get. What's really more meaningful is when you're in it and you're experiencing something and you're trying to problem-solve about a student, if somebody can come in and help observe and create plans and, you know, make suggestions. So that's one big piece. We have teacher requests that come in to me all the time, where people want to go to things. Some require subs, some it's just the cost because they want to go on a Saturday. I usually handle it on a first-come, first-served basis, as long as it's aligned with their content area and it's, you know, quality, something like a quality PD. Another thing that we do here is, you know, through our grants, in particular, we're able to offer a lot of curriculum planning stipends. So it's a lot when teachers have to adopt a new curriculum. And so I'm really cognizant of that, and every time that they do, a lot of solid amount of our funds for time after hours for teachers to come together and do some of that, we call it lesson internalization, where they're really looking through the materials, picking out the most important parts. They're doing what we call unit unpacking, where it's not like actual unpacking, but it's like, okay, what is the assessment at the end? What are all the things I'm gonna do in my instruction to get there? At the elementary level, we have curriculum committees, just because there are so many elementary teachers, that we try to get about two per grade level to help doing things like determine the must-dos versus the may-dos in a really comprehensive program. This year, we, well, for many years now, but this year in particular, we've instituted walkthrough and feedback cycles for teachers so that we're able to get into those classrooms. And, you know, we've done just so much work with procuring materials and doing this lesson internalization, but now we need to see, you know, how is that translating into instruction and really being able to coach and support teachers in that? One thing I hear about all the time is we need more time. I think you could probably never give people enough time, but one thing we're trying to combat that with is the facilitated common planning time. So the idea behind that is using time that they're already, they already have and are allocated for some of this professional learning. In addition to the coaching cycles that our coordinators, Wendy and Carlton, do, we also bring in outside vendors sometimes to work on things more specifically. So one model we've had that's been really successful is, New England Base Camp has a coach that comes in to specifically work on classroom management, so that they're working on that and we're kind of working on more of the instructional pieces. And that's been very well received this year. It's been great. Faculty meetings, probably about six years ago, we revamped those so that they're not like, well, let's go through this list, we have SATs on Tuesday and, you know, blah, blah, blah. It's much more relevant to the teaching and learning that's going on. And again, we accomplish that during the day, sometimes with substitutes, even though we try to minimize that as much as possible because we want teachers to be in front of kids, and we do have after-school opportunities. And I did want to call out, our paraprofessionals participate in a lot of professional learning, and they also have contractual stipends that support that, and they really do take advantage of it. So it's great to see in this district. So just to say a little bit more about our STEM and ELA coordinators, you know, teachers are really busy teaching. The research is coming out constantly. They don't necessarily have time to be digging into all of that, so one of their primary roles is to bring it back and to bring it to life. As I mentioned, those walkthrough and feedback, they're considered cycles of continuous improvement because you're just kind of going in and you're continuing to just try to do that one small thing, one small change that's going to continue to improve instruction. We can, we also do more formal coaching cycles where, you know, it's more of a one-on-one situation. They really help with the curriculum adoption and development with the teachers because, again, that's a heavy lift. Elementary tends to get hit a little bit harder just because they teach all of the subjects. So we adopt one, we try to wait at least three years, adopt another, wait three years. And, you know, they plan to facilitate PD that's tailored to Smithfield, unlike having vendors come in. And then just one, another big part of their job is they do student work analysis. So when you're in the classrooms, you're looking at the teaching. When you're, you know, doing student work analysis, you're really focused on the learning. So did that translate to the learning that we're expecting? Administrators also participate in professional learning, pretty extensive. And again, we have that summer retreat, which is kind of considered like our PD days, but we also have monthly meetings. Again, we have consultants coming in and myself and Wendy and I mean, and a lot of us doing some of these walkthroughs with our principals to really bring them up on all of these high-quality instructional materials and, more importantly, the instructional shifts that are, surround them. Do legal institutes with our Sean Clough, they're wonderful. Book studies, professional organizations, and conferences. So when we look at the funding for our professional learning, so our local funds really support those professional development stipends for teachers and paraprofessionals. And I should mention that in this current contract, we are going from 16.5 hours of professional development to 20. So that's an increase. We're getting a whole nother professional learning day, and then teachers on their own, instead of doing five and a half, they're doing three and a half. So we support in that, in that way. We support with substitute costs. Again, we pay for workshops and conferences based on teacher requests. We pay for mentor stipends for all of our first-year teachers, first-year to Smithfield. It's not necessarily first-year teacher in general. And we pay for that embedded consultation, so the clinical psychologists, the, you know, autism experts, et cetera. So local funds really pick that up. One thing I didn't include in this pie chart was... One thing I didn't include in this pie chart was, you know, the salaries of the STEM and ELA coordinator, I kept that separate. And then for grant funding, that's where we have outside facilitators and consultants, workshops, and I just gave a few examples, like responsive classroom training, AP training for teachers that have never taught it before, that kind of thing. Again, I had mentioned in the grants, I put those teacher stipends in for implementing new programs, and then any additional professional development and substitute costs. So that's the breakdown. It's about a 60-40, where it's 60% local, 40% grants. And if you wanted to look at that same funding that I was just talking about by object code, the vast majority is spent on kind of that conference, training, consultant piece, 38%. The contractual PD stipends, about 26. Special ed consultation at 24, and then lesser amounts for additional, not the contractual PD stipends, but additional stipends that we're providing. So one example of that was when I got the grant to do the MLL Institute, we were able to pay our teachers to come to that over the summer. And then again, you see the PD subs and curriculum stipends. As I had mentioned, we surveyed the teachers. I just wanted to give you one example of, this is from, I believe, November. Professional learning, these are the questions that we asked, professional learning was relevant, and so we got nice, solid results on that. I'm able to implement it into my job, which is one of the most important things for professional learning.
So only 40 responded out of how many staff members?
That was from November, so 40 out of maybe, I don't know, maybe 100. And then we got about 60 from the secondary, but the results were extremely similar, it was almost exactly the same. So I just wanted to give you one example. So we got about a 50% response rate, maybe? And then do I think that the professional learning will positively impact student learning and achievement? Because let's face it, that's why we're doing it, right? And then beyond that, I also have free response. So it's what, what other professional learning would you like to see in the future? And again, I've already kind of mentioned that the one thing that they bring up over and over and over again is more time.
This is just a quick aside, but like when you study data results for something like this, like you've got a small group of people who disagreed, which is fine, and that's normal in anything, but then those same people thought it would impact the students? Like that doesn't even, that doesn't make sense. I'm not asking you to explain that because you can't because they, but that, that's just an outlier to me, that they either didn't understand the question or, you know what I'm saying? You can't say that you didn't think it was relevant and you didn't think that you were going to be able to implement it, but you did think it was great for the kids. Right? And I mean, that's, that's a big enough slice that it was displayed on the chart, so just kind of something to think about, maybe a question, or if they just lay like that and people just.
Yeah, and as I said, it was quite similar. It was almost exact at the secondary level. We had like a small group disagree. But I do like the open response because people say more time. I've gotten responses like, you know, co-teaching, which is where the coordinators come in, that's huge, they're able to get in the classroom and do some of that, you know, model lessons. It's, it's good. They give, teachers give great feedback. So when we talk about what are our professional learning drivers, so certainly teacher input and student needs, and I've already mentioned the surveys and we do extensive data analysis, strategic plan, which is great because it captures really the entire community's kind of wants and needs. And that's where, you know, when we talk about the CTE push, you know, that came out of the latest strategic planning cycle as something that people here in Smithfield really wanted. But a huge one, I would say the largest, is legislation. And so when we talk about, you know, the latest to impact professional learning, it would be that high-quality instructional material legislation because you can't just buy things and shove them at teachers, right? Like you have to support it extensively for multiple years because again, this isn't just new materials, it's materials and new instructional practices. So that's one, and that's still affecting us, so we're still in the process of adopting science. So that's what's going to be coming up next. If you remember, we had the right to read legislation. Now, we were lucky in the sense, well, I don't know if I can use lucky and COVID in the same, but that those funds came in at the same time as that legislation. If not, I honestly don't know how we would have paid for it because it was extremely expensive and it was extremely time-consuming. Do I believe in it 100%? I was a reading specialist, it was needed, we didn't get trained in the science of reading when I graduated from college, it wasn't like a thing. So yes, it was absolutely necessary, but I just want you to understand that when we're talking about, we have 11 hours in the past of PD time, and these take like 100, you know, it's really limiting on the other professional learning that they're able to do. And I put in here, coming soon, that if the latest MLL regulations come through, it's going to, if they go through, right now it's in public comment, so I encourage you to look at that, but if they go through, it's going to be very similar to right to read in the sense that all teachers will have to show some level of proficiency for teaching multilingual learners. And so, you know, that has to be in place by 2029. So when I forecast out, our, the bulk of our professional learning is already planned through 2029. The other big driver is grants and opportunities. And so, you know, I put a few examples. When they gave us the Comprehensive Literacy State Development Grant to support English Language Arts, we took advantage of that and that helped us with the material implementation. We had an opportunity come across from Providence College for self-regulated strategy development. We're year one of that partnership right now. It's basically the only evidence-based approach to writing that's been out there, tried and true for a long time. And so we're currently in a two-year cycle to implement that, again, free of cost. And certainly, RIDE sponsors several different opportunities that our teachers take part And that brings me to the end, so I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about professional learning.
Thanks. I didn't know a lot of this, so it was good to see it and super helpful to see how we're doing. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
It was thorough.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on. Before I do, if anybody wants to sign up, public forum, still time. Communications, item 13, copy of resignation, retirements, new hires in the district. B, a copy of December budget transfers, which we already discussed, I guess. A copy of the executed owner's project manager OEM agreement for RIDE stage one, stage two for emergency projects with health and safety. So, public forum. Ian McLean, I'd like to discuss the 25, or the discussion, but talk about the 25-26 calendar.
Yes. Good evening. Ian McLean, 225 U Drive. One of the things I've heard over the last four or five council meetings that I've come to have been a discussion and continuing trend on attendance. I understand the state's calendar for 25-26 was released a week and a half or so ago. Last year, the Smithfield calendar was released in April versus prior, years prior to that, it was in February. So one of the things I wanted to bring to attention is to improve attendance, to make it easier on families for planning for childcare. It would be really beneficial to us to have that calendar released earlier in the year. If it happened in February like we did previously, it would be incredibly helpful.
Do you respond to that? Yeah, sure. We know about this. Thank you.
We anticipate that it will come for the school committee at the next meeting. So RIDE releases a suggested calendar, the purpose of which is to look in your own communities as well as surrounding communities. So our consortium of superintendents, because we do have certainly families that our teachers live in other parts, so we do look at that. We also, under contract, consult with our teachers union and administrators. So we have just the outline of RIDE suggested, and then each of the locals decides on their own. So we just finished Sarah and David yesterday, so that is going to print, so there was not enough time to bring it for tonight because I do anticipate having it at the next meeting. Last year's calendar was actually changed in April, it came out in March. So this time, we hope that it'll be complete, it'll come before the school committee for their discussion and either approval or to send it back.
A great improvement. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
All results could be so simple. All right.
Good to give good news once in a while. Thank you.
Item 15, any items to add to future agendas?
I have one. I know we've talked about this, we talked about it last meeting, we've talked about it in the past, we talk about doing these public workshops. In order for one to occur in the spring, I had suggested that we have a special education public workshop. I think for the most part, everybody seems on board with that. I would love to add that as an actual agenda item because if we don't, we're going to lose track of time and the spring's going to pass and it's not going to happen. So I think timing is perfect that, you know, we have this in conjunction with when we're looking to make significant improvements in the actual facilities, and then also can review things that I had mentioned myself to Dr. Bartz as far as our transitions from middle school to high school, and also fifth grade to middle school and whatnot, and any other topics that, you know, we think are, you know, important to review as part of special education and have this public workshop for it. So I'd like to make.
So just so I clarify, do you want it on a meeting agenda, or are you envisioning the workshop to be separate from a meeting?
The workshop will be separate from a meeting. I'm asking for an agenda item to make sure that it actually happens.
Okay, special ed. All right, anything else?
Not something to add to future agendas, I just want to give a compliment. I got to attend the Future Business Leaders of America panel today at the high school, and I just, I was so impressed by students, by Mr. Waterman, so many different learners, different passions, different interests, and I was sitting beside so many different professionals, and I was blown away. They were respectful, they were attentive, they asked incredible questions. It was a wonderful morning, so job well done to everyone involved.
Very good.
It's great.
Okay. If we're all set with that, we're going to move on to item 16, which is consider vote on a motion to convene executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A, matters pertaining to personnel, discussion of evaluation of superintendents in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, Rhode Island General Laws 42-46-5A1, and review of executive session minutes at December 16, 2024. Any person who discussed in this meeting has been notified and has been given an opportunity to have that discussion, third and open session, the committee did not receive such a request. So this will require a motion?
Motion to convene executive session.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Ms. Affleck?
Aye.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Oberg?
Aye.
And Ms. LeVine?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. We'll see that. All right, special ed, we didn't adjourn. Nothing, this is going to be very short.